Good evening. Welcome to the November 7th, 2017 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting, held in the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, our invocation will be presented by Pastor Mark Borsuth of Resurrection Lutheran Church, followed by the flag salute. Mr. Borsuth. Reverend Borsuth.
For some reason, Ron Rasmussen didn't want to pray just because he's in Texas today. I can't figure out why.
Maybe that's why he can't.
Yeah. Let's pray. God, we thank you for this city. We thank you for blessing us with a good place to live, with good people, and we thank you for good leadership and pray that you bless the discussions that are happening tonight among the council and all the work that happens in our city government here in Yukon, our county government here in Canadian County. We thank you for the leaders who have shared their gifts and their time and their talents and their energy and pray for blessings upon our council tonight, on our city staff tonight. We pray for them individually, for their health, for their families, for their relationships, that you would bless them as they seek to serve others. We thank you for the city. We pray blessings upon our schools, our students, teachers, families, school staff. We pray blessings upon our businesses, our Chamber of Commerce. We pray blessings upon our Police and Fire Department. We just thank you for the gifts you've given us and help us to be good stewards of these gifts as we serve one another, as we love one another. We thank you, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
McCarron.
Here.
Smysterla.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Yanda.
We have a proclamation this evening for Small Business Saturday, so Terry Martin, would you care to come up and join me, please? Are we live? Our proclamation this evening, whereas the government of the city of Yukon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and the community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all of the businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping, and whereas the city of Yukon supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCarron, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday. And urge all the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year, given under my hand and seal this day, the 7th day of November 2017. Terry.
Thank you, Senator.
May I show your appreciation?
On behalf of the Yukon 66th Main Street, I'm proud to receive this proclamation from the mayor, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the city of Yukon, City Council, Jim Crosby, and everyone else that's been so supportive of our programs and organization. Thank you.
Thank you. This is our visitor section of the meeting where visitors can come forward and address the council on a non-agended item. Do we have any folks who wish to speak?
Have no requests, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone from the audience? Thank you very much. We will now recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all the authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. Item, the city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) The minutes of the regular meeting of October the 17th, 2017; B) Payment of material claims in the amount of $219,179.01. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion is a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Item 2A, consider approving an agreement for bond counsel services with the Public Finance Law Group, PLLC, and Williams, Box, Forshee, and Bullard, PC, for professional and legal services regarding the issuance of the Sales Tax Revenue Note taxable series 2017B pursuant to Resolution YMA 2017-06 passed on October 17, 2017. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item 3A, consider accepting the warranty deeds for the donation of two tracts of land from ODB Investors LLC for the construction and realignment of Vandement Avenue, a tract located at the southwest quarter of Section 19, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel Number 4.1, and a tract located in the northwest quarter of Section 19, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 3. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Member of the council, these items, 3A and 4A, is for the construction of Vandement Avenue in order to build the intersection, interchange at I-40 and Frisco Road. 3A is a donated deeds for two tracts of land that will be coming to us free of charge. 4A is returning the other land on the realignment of Vandement because we adjusted that so that the abandonment will go on the north side of the water tower to align with the entrance of the new water park that will be built there. So, like I say, both these items are donated to the city or are being donated. We're returning the easement on 4A back to the landowner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, John? Thank you, Jim. Seeing no further discussion, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item 4A, consider approving the warranty deed to donate excess property located on the north side of Frisco Road Water Tower to ODB Investors LLC, specifically excess property from the construction and realignment of Vandement Avenue and Frisco Road, a tract located at the southwest quarter, Section 19, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 4. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the City Council Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items which they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October the 17th, 2017, payment of material claims in the amount of $570,051.59. Item C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D, entering into a billboard advertising agreement with Central Oklahoma Marketing Group for digital billboard advertising space from December 7, 2017, to June 1, 2018, in the amount of $7,200. E, accepting the recommendation of the Yukon Park Board to consider future splash pad sites at Kimball Park and Freedom Trail Playground. F, accepting the recommendation of the Yukon Park Board to consider a more aesthetically pleasing structure to replace the fencing in front of the Yukon Community Center, located on the south side of Holly Avenue adjacent to Interstate 40. G, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for November 21, 2017, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion, except I'd like to, I'd make a motion for A, B, C, F, and G. I'd like to pull items D and E for just a little bit of discussion, please.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion for all the items except D and E?
So moved.
Second.
Actually, you're the second.
I'm the second.
Oh, John, okay. Okay. Vote, please, on the first items.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Item D, entering into a billboard advertising agreement with Central Oklahoma Marketing Group for a digital advertising space from December 7, 2017, to June 1, 2018, in the amount of $7,200.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Discussion, please.
Jim, can you just, a little explanation, just to, I understand, but for the purpose, just for the audience?
Yes, this is a, one of those electronic billboards that the gentleman gave us a discount. This is a renewal of the agreement we had last year with him. We advertise on all of our various things and events that happen in the city, and we get two different ads on there that we can use. We can change them monthly, and this is about half price what you'd normally charge on this item.
I think I saw two of your cheeks on there the other day.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
We'll have to vote on each one of these individually, is that?
That's right.
Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote on item D, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Item E, accepting the recommendation of the Yukon Park Board to consider future splash pad sites at Kimball Park and the Freedom Trail Playground.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Jim, I just wanted, the letter, it's just a letter from the Park Board saying that recommend that we build these. That's all that this is, right?
That's correct. It's not a commitment of this council, it's just accepting their recommendation to us, and I got this sometime in the future, they'd like to see these things constructed. At present time, we do not have any of these in our
Budget.
In our budget or in our plans, and it's something we'd have to discuss at a later date to consider.
Okay. Well, having been on the Park Board and heard this discussion, and then back on the council now, I guess this is, I'm working on my eighth, this is my eighth year. So this has been a long time coming, and I'm pleased to see this on here, the recommendation from the Park Board, but, so, I, as an advocate for our parks and more activities for the kids, I would strongly urge that the city staff and the council would support this, the Park Board's recommendation, and see that we can maybe work on one of these. I think the recommendation was, yeah, for Freedom Trail and for Kimball Park. I would really, really like to see us try to move forward. I know that in the past, we'd had a conversation about the Community Center Pool and that it's probably moving toward the end of its lifespan, so I just hope that we are looking toward the future and take note of this recommendation from the Park Board. That's my discussion.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
That completes the item 1. Item 2 is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby?
No report to save you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Yukon and the Yukon Fraternal Order of Police for the purchase of police equipment effective October 1, 2017 through October 1, 2018, not to exceed $128,442. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Discussion.
Need a second.
I can second it, but I thought.
Second, oh, yeah. Okay, discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor, this item comes before you. You recall, we had, have been working to standardize equipment in the police department and what they carry. We standardized the pistols with an agreement with them several months back. They'd like to standardize the rifles that are carried in their area. This will purchase the .46 rifles they've requested and the, all the equipment that goes with them, and this helps us also when they go to qualify at the range. We shoot in with one shell instead of all types of shells and various costs and everything, and it's good to have standardized equipment. This is something I certainly believe in and would recommend that we approve this.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Item 4, consider awarding the contract for the 2017 roof replacement project to today's roofing in an amount not to exceed $57,737, as recommended by the emergency manager. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Richard.
Just for the audience, more than anything, this was bid and had multiple.
Yes. Several years back, there was a number of roofs that were damaged in a hailstorm. We received some payments on that from our insurance company, however, we never repaired those roofs. Again, should we have another storm of any kind and those roofs be damaged, we cannot receive any remuneration for that because we failed to repair them in a timely manner, and we needed to move forward on it. We've had several problems with it, and once we discovered this, we were moving forward to get these, and we bid it and had a little problem with the bid, so we rebid it. This is a low bid, and we recommend that we get these roofs repaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
What area, I mean, what buildings? Was it this building only, or is...
No, there was
Several.
There was a number of buildings. There was, the police building has been damaged, there's, this building was damaged. There was, I think there was like four or five buildings that had been damaged.
I just thought that might be a good idea.
The gazebo's out at the park.
It's good to get them done.
Right.
The gazebo's, it's, we need to get them repaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Item 5, approving, consider approving Ordinance 1350, an ordinance which provides an amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, by amending certain sections as necessitated by 20OS 1313.2, and this is the updated Oklahoma Code section effective November 1, 2017, of the Oklahoma statutes and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Could you explain this a little bit?
Yes, the state has passed some laws, and our ordinances are, were different from that as far as cost and charges for various things. This brings us into alignment with state law, which we have to do.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item 5A, consider approving the emergency clause of the ordinance for number 1350. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion on the emergency? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item 6, consider approving Ordinance 1351, an ordinance which provides an amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, by amending certain sections as necessitated by 20OS 1313.3 and 1313.4, and these are state mandated increases in fees of Oklahoma statutes and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item 6A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1351. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Item 7.
Wait a minute, Mr. McCarron.
I'm sorry, what?
Your response to the
Oh, I said yes.
Your guess? And Smysterla.
Yes.
Item 7, consider approving Ordinance 1352, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A, of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for a part of the northwest quarter of Section 28, Township 12, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, be changed from R3 multifamily residential district to C3 PUD, Restricted Commercial District, Planned Unit Development, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item 7A, consider approving the emergency clause of the ordinance 1352. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Item 8, consider approving Resolution 2017-18, a resolution authorized the calling and holding of an election in the city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, for the purpose of electing one council member from Ward 1 and one council member from Ward 2 for four-year terms ending in May 2022 and setting the filing period for the election. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Vote, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item 9, consider accepting the permanent easement from ODB Investors LLC for the construction of a storm drain for the Frisco Road project located at the northwest quarter, Section 19, Township 12, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel 3.1. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Vote, please. I'm sorry.
Jim, can you just, nine, 10, 11, and 12, no, or just nine, 10, and 11, they're all tied together, is that right?
Correct.
Can you give us a little explanation?
Yes, councilmember Albert and members of the council. Item 9 is just to the north of the interchange of Vandement Avenue. There's a storm drain that crosses that road. During the improvement of that road, in order to make it operative, we're going to have to replace that and extend that so many feet to the east to take care of the drainage on that. To give that, we have to get an easement from the ODB Investors, who's the LLC who owns the land. And again, this is something that'll be part of the road project, and they're donating this, they're giving that to us free of charge. The same is true on the permanent easement for an existing water line on the south side of the water tower between Frisco Road and Vandement Avenue. This was the original alignment of the road was to be on the south side of the water tower. When the water park came into existence, in order not to have a lot of different interchanges and what have you, we moved Vandement to the north of the water tower. Therefore, we gave that, or giving that land back to the person that gave us, and they gave us a new easement north of the water tower in exchange for that. But we need to still keep an easement for our water line that's in existence to the water tower. This is what number 10 is about. During construction, we have to have a temporary easements During construction, we have to have a temporary easements, again, for the realignment of Van Damman Frisco Road, and that's what number eleven is about, and that is from, again, ODB Investors LLC, and this is for, uh, and these are temporary easements, means once we get these items done, this easement will return to them. We're just getting it while the construction is going on, during the construction phase. Same was with item twelve from Butte Land Investment. That is on the other side of Frisco Road, on the west side, and this is, uh, during their interchange, right where their interchange or intersection will be, we have to have a temporary easement so that we can show that when we do the road in there and get in there and start doing some work. And, uh, so Butte Land Investments is giving that to us in order that we can now bid that project and move forward, which after we accept all these easements and temporary easements, we then will be coming back to our next meeting and asking for permission to go out and bid on Van Damman Avenue.
Great. Thank you very much, and I appreciate ODB also working really hard with you, Jim, and making these things happen on this project.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item ten. Consider accepting the permanent easement from ODB Investors LLC for an existing water line on the south side of the water tower between Frisco Road and Van Damman Avenue, located in the southwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township twelve north, Range five west of the Indian Meridian, the City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, better known as parcel four dot two. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item eleven. Consider accepting the temporary easements from ODB Investors LLC for the construction and realignment of Van Damman Avenue and Frisco Road for, A, a tract of land lying between the northwest quarter, Section nineteen, Township twelve, north, Range five west of the Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as parcel three dot two. A tract of land lying in the northwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township twelve north, Range five west of the Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as parcel three dot three. A tract of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township twelve north, Range five west of the Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as parcel four dot three. A tract of land, item D. A tract of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township twelve north, Range five west of the Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as parcel four dot four. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item twelve. Consider accepting the temporary easement from Butte Land Investments LLC to allow for the construction on Frisco Road located in the northeast quarter, Section twenty-four, Township twelve, Range six west of Indian Meridian, City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, better known as parcel number two. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? And this, this is just the additional piece of land that's on the other side of the road, on Frisco Road, where we have easements over there. Uh, Jim, do you have any?
Right, that, that's the intersection that, uh, Van Damman will meet.
Meet with.
Right, those are the curb cuts and what have you.
Right. We have to deal with both sides of the road, so.
Right.
Okay, any other further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item thirteen. New business, Mr. Shepherd.
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion. Ms. Erle?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who has come to the meeting this evening. It's, uh, kinda like church. It's great. The whole congregation, well, we're happy you're here, and thank you.
Richard?
I also would like to thank all of you for being here and participating and your work here. Just thank you for, uh, being here to help us, and, uh, everybody have a good night and a wonderful week. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, a few things. Uh, first, I'd like to say thanks to Terry for, Martin, for being here tonight and representing the small businesses in Yukon. Being one, I moved from Oklahoma City out here, and I've hired, if you can count me, there's five of us. Three of us live in Yukon. But also, coming up on the, uh, Christmas time, I know that before long, the chamber will be here to encourage you to shop Yukon. So not only do you help support a local business that employs someone that lives in Yukon, your tax dollar stays here and help, help fund the projects, build the streets, the parks, the splash pads, and those types of things. So I appreciate, Terry, you being here, and also just remember, it's Christmas time. Shop Yukon, try your best to keep your money here, 'cause it matters. Mike, you might be gonna remind the people, but Chill Your Cheeks is coming up. It's November the eighteenth. That's five K run. So if you've got, uh, a little extra energy, a little extra money, a little extra time, or just wanna go and socialize, it's a great opportunity to come to the park, see the people turn on the lights, hang out, have some free food, snacks, not really dinner, but anything. Uh, come and visit and ha- have a good time. And then, lastly, uh, Mr. Andrews, thank you for being here again with, uh, a group of students, uh, that are here anxious. I hope, they seem to be anxious. They're probably anxious to leave, but I hope they're anxious to retake, uh, the horseshoe up here and, and learn, and, uh, I appreciate that. Uh, so in nineteen eighty-three and before, uh, about the time that Mr. Andrews was in school, I was one of you guys, so I made my way up here. So I'm an alumni who served as the mayor a couple of times and everything, so I appreciate your interest in government. Uh, a lot of times, it looks like we're making stew. It's not very exciting, but it, it matters. So I appreciate your interest in our community. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Andrews, for continuing to, uh, generate these young people with the interest in, in government and important issues. Thank you very much.
And for me, I just, uh, you know, Yukon is a, a great place to be, guys. I, you couldn't pick a town that I'm more proud of. Went over to the Arts and Crafts Festival they had. They had a big bake sale, uh, and, uh, that, uh, we did very well with, and those kinds of funds, and those are turned back around right into our city for things like the Spirit League that we have, where we can go out and put in facilities that are actually paid for by funds that we raise right here in the community. So, you know, Yukon is a, a really great place. John has already spoken to you about, uh, Saturday and November the eighteenth on the Chill Your Cheeks run, uh, but there's also, right next to it, there's a Jingle Walk about an hour later, and I'm not sure that, uh, I know what the Jingle Walk is, but it's on my list.
Jingle or jiggle?
It says jingle. It could, I didn't, I didn't check the age group on there to see whether it was jingle or jiggle.
I think it depends on the individual.
Yeah, I think it's probably a, a personal thing. But, uh, I have a few other things here. Uh, Thursday, November the sixteenth, uh, seeds, uh, tickets go on sale for, uh, Sounds of the Season. Uh, Friday, November the seventeenth, uh, all Sounds of the Season tickets go on sale, uh, and, uh, during all of, several locations here around town, uh, Y and B, uh, City of Yukon Rec Area, uh, Dale Robertson Center, uh, so, uh, you can stop by and pick up your tickets there. Reserve tickets on sale, uh, at the Dale Robertson Center. The reserve tickets are only on sale at the Dale Robertson Center, excuse me, and each ticket is ten dollars with a limit of six per person. For those of you who've not ever attended, uh, the Sounds of the Season is the Oklahoma City Philharmonic, comes out here and plays for the Yukon residents. Uh, it's a very big thing, and, uh, it's very special, uh, to me. I've always enjoyed it. One of the one, wonderful quality of life things we have. Friday, November the seventeenth, the Maple Sea Fry Library hosts the Yukon Community Coffee. Saturday, the Ladies Library Club, on November the eighteenth, Ladies Library Club Silent Auction, uh, closes at noon. So, uh, you might wanna be there to make sure you're the last entry on the sheet. I don't know. Uh, once again, Chill Your Cheeks and the Jingle Walk that same day, and they also have a Kris Kringle Carnival at the Yukon Community Center, featuring live entertainment, games, crafts, uh, Christmas characters, and pictures with Santa. The opening of Christmas in the park for the holiday season, six-thirty P.M. Uh, it's starting November the nineteenth, the park will open six to ten nightly until New Year's Eve, and the three park complex, uh, opens, uh, there's actually three small parks all attached to each other. Uh, and I'm also really excited about our new opportunity to have a, a really, we had a chance this last week to go look at a similar facility, uh, down in the Dallas area of what we're anticipating is going to be coming here for a water park, and it's pretty special, folks. So I'm, we're looking forward to that coming this way. And with, is there any other further business? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know how many of you have been to the Nutcracker here in Yukon. Um, there's three of us that are involved. Raise your hand. And so, it's December second and third, and there are tickets, again, at Y and B, any of our branches, and, um, they're fifteen dollars, I think, uh, in advance, twenty at the door. But it's, it's also, uh, it's not the Oklahoma City Philharmonic, but it's a live orchestra, like seven, and it's in the, what do you call that building? At the old high school? Fine Arts Auditorium, thank you. Um, it's, uh, December second at eight o'clock and on Saturday night, and on Sunday afternoon, it's at two o'clock. So that's what I want. Don't forget that.
Anything else? No further business before the council this evening. This meeting is adjourned.